So we will call this meeting of the Trumbull Town Council Finance Committee to order at 7:38 PM. I would like to start, actually, today is an auspicious day, as many people who may have watched the news earlier today, that the United States passed 500,000 deaths as a matter of COVID-19. So I'd like to start with a moment of silence in reverence to all of those lives that we've lost over the past year or so. And then we will then have the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by our call of the roll. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Kevin Shively. Kevin, you're muted.
Oh, I thought I said here before I muted, sorry.
Michael Miller.
Here.
Ashley Gaudiano.
Here.
Mary Isaac.
Yep.
Laurie Rosasco-Schwarz.
Here.
Tony Sinto.
Here.
Carol Hans. Donna Sidell. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We just have two resolutions on our agenda today, both having to do with the bonding for the next year. So to begin with, may I ask Ms. Rosasco-Schwarz to read the first resolution, TC 28-157, please?
Just give me a quick second to pull it back up. Actually, how about if I read the next one? Just go to the.
Sure, no problem. So, uh, let's see. I'm sorry, Ashley, did you?
I'm happy to do it. I haven't pulled.
Okay, please do so.
Resolution TC 28-157, be resolved that resolution appropriating $3,650,000 for the Trumbull Board of Education Capital Improvement Plan 2021-2022, and authorizing the issue of $3,650,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation. Impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose is hereby approved. Full resolution attached.
Do we hear a second for this resolution?
Second, Laurie Schwartz.
Thank you. And discussion, do we have anyone here from the Board of Ed or that wants to speak to this? I will say, just so everybody's aware, we did, the decision was made to put one of the roofing projects off until next year and just focus specifically on the Middlebrooks roofing, primarily because there was some concern that we could do both projects in the same year. We kind of ran into that last year with the, the building committee on the, with the projects of the window replacement on two different schools. So, so in this case, the Middlebrooks project was the one that was deemed to be more immediately needed. So we put off the, the other projects to future years. I see we do have.
That was, that was a Jane Ryan roof, if I remember correctly, right?
That's correct.
Pushed out another year until a further evaluation could be completed.
That's correct, because also the Jane Ryan roof, if you remember, was a little newer.
Yeah, quite a bit, right? It was only a ten-year roof, so the questions arose as to why such a short life on that roof, so.
Exactly, and whether there were any warranties or things like that that we need to take into consideration, yeah.
If I may, sir.
Please.
I believe I see Paul Hendrickson as an attendee. He might need to be brought in as a panelist.
Okay, Bill, is that something you can accommodate?
And Scott Care from the Board of Education.
I do see you there as well. Okay.
So. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find a copy of your materials for tonight, but what was, what was the total? Is it, is it the same amount that was approved by the Board of Finance?
It is.
That there, so it's, is it 3,609?
350,000, actually, altogether. 3,650,000 is the amount in the resolution.
Okay.
Yes, Scott, this is Mike Miller. The actual amount on listed is 3,609,500.
3,609,500 is what I thought that the Board of Finance had passed, so I was surprised to hear a different number.
So I guess I would ask, then, am I looking at the wrong thing? Because I'm, I pulled this agenda down from the town website.
Through the chair.
Yes, please.
Ashley Gaudiano. So the resolution itself is for 3.65. That's the bond amount authorized in the resolution. The amount in the documentation in the backup is the number that Mr. Miller just referenced.
Okay.
So then, is this 3,650,000 the correct number? Or does it need to be amended to match the number in the backup information?
Through the chair, I would ask that Dan Schopik speak to that, please.
I think it's a Maria question. I don't know what actually was approved.
I just have a question. Does anybody know what the difference between the 3,650 and the 3,609 is?
This is for selectmen, Vicky Tassar. Maria, you got it? Okay, go ahead.
This is Maria Pyris. The difference has to do with the bonding costs. There's 40,500 for bonding costs associated with that 3,609.
So the Board of Finance then approved the lower amount, not taking into consideration that bonding cost, or that bonding cost is not required?
They approved the 3,650.
They did?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the 3,650,000 is correct, then. That is the full amount of the bond that's being, that's being approved this evening. Any more discussion on this?
Yeah, through the chair, I have one more question, Ashley Gaudiano. So we've removed the Jane Ryan roof, which makes sense. Is it still sitting with both the Middlebrook and the Booth Hill? Or are we just sitting with the Middlebrook for this year?
So as far as roofing projects, it would just be the Middlebrook. There is a Booth Hill project, however, it has to do with drainage.
Okay, so we've removed the, the roofing one as well.
Correct.
Listed.
Please, Mr. Kerr.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. I know that the Booth Hill roof also was removed.
Okay.
From, from the current, the current bonding request, although there was discussion at the Board of Finance meeting about the possibility of amending the request at a later date to add the Booth Hill roof back in. But right now, it's just the Middlebrook roof that we're discussing.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And Mr. Kerr, was that pending further examination of the roof, or is there something else that has to happen?
I honestly don't know what has to happen on, on their end to do that, but they discussed the fact that, given that both the Booth Hill and the Middlebrook roofs are both over 30 years old, and they're in similar condition, that we should do them as quickly as possible. And so they, they were, they were considering whether they would do a revision, an amendment. But it couldn't happen in this cycle, so they'll come back, it'll come through again if they decide to do that.
Right, but just to reiterate, I believe that there was some concern. I mean, I know that some, several people have spoken about the, the concern about being able to accomplish both roofs in the, you know, in the same year. So I know that that was one of the considerations that people had talked about in the past. Again, going back to our previous experience recently with the window replacements at Jane Ryan and Booth Hill.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, it's Dan Schopik.
Please.
I think the, Mr. Fazey's on the, on telephone, so he probably knows more about this than I do. But the explanation that was given at the Board of Finance meeting was that the, since the bond, since the resolution that has been published has the $3,650,000 in it, that it is not legally possible to add another project, to add funding for another project tonight. So as Mr. Kerr suggested, that we'll need to get a later, if in fact, the decision is made to try to get it done.
Understood. Okay, so we'll take that up at a later date. Any other discussion about this current resolution?
Uh, Kevin, it's Tony. I have a question for Maria.
Please.
Hi, Maria. How much debt is expiring this year, bonding debt?
$13 million.
Thirteen? And the $7 million property, that's going to go on a different bonding in the future, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Through the chair.
Please, Mr. Miller.
Uh, yeah, Mike Miller. This question's actually for Mr. Care. I was, we had a discussion previously about the auditorium improvements at Trumbull High. I saw this now at 57. So what is that now covering for those improvements? I assume you guys were addressing the light issues through another means, so now what does this one cover?
So that, that $57,000 represents work to build platforms on either side of the current lighting and sound booth to raise the spotlights up off the floor. Currently, the spotlights sit on temporary scaffoldings in the back of the auditorium, and we're seeking to build platforms for them, to get them out and out of the, out of the audience's pathway.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, hearing none. Is there any objection to approving this by unanimous consent?
No.
Hearing no objection, then this will be approved by unanimous consent. And then Ms. Rosasco-Schwarz, would you mind, please, bringing the next resolution to the floor, please?
Certainly, thank you. I have it pulled up now. Resolution TC 28-158, be resolved that resolution appropriating $8,380,000 for the Trumbull Town Capital Improvement Plan 2021-2022, and authorizing the issue of $8,380,000 of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation. Impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose is hereby approved. Full resolution attached.
Do I hear a second? I'm sorry?
Second, Mike Miller.
Mike Miller, second, thank you. And I know we have a number of people that could speak to this. I see Mr. Paris and some others here. Do we have any questions or discussion about this resolution?
Through the chair, I have a few questions.
Please, Ms. Gaudiano.
Um, I don't know if we just want to go through the summary, and I can kind of ask them in order of the summary. Does that work for you? Okay.
Sure, absolutely.
So my first question is just a kind of basic, the, on the roadways, it talks about video inspection included for each year. I understand kind of the basic, what I imagine is the basic concept of video inspection, but I'm just curious how long we've been doing that, how much we've found, how many issues we've found via video inspection, and how much we anticipate finding if we continue to do that. And are we, you know, setting aside enough money to deal with the things we uncover by video inspection?
I can, I can answer that. William Martin, engineer.
Thank you.
On, we've been, we, for the past 10 years, we've been videoing every road, all the drainage prior to paving, so that we fix any sewer defect or stormwater defect before we pave the road and have to dig it up prior to paving it. We've uncovered quite a few, if you look at all the drainage repairs that we've done over the years. You know, infrastructure, once it's in the ground, isn't, put it in and forget it. It's, it has to be maintained, and this is the only way that we can effectively do it. We can make logical choices after making, doing a video inspection instead of digging up and replacing.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to keep going unless you want me to stop.
Please, keep going.
Okay, um, this is just a note, you know, I see down on townwide, we've got 80,000 budgeted for sidewalks. My assumption is that's maintenance for existing sidewalks. And, you know, I just, being in District 4, I'm flagging that there are certainly areas down in District 4 where we could benefit from continuing sidewalks and connecting some of the dots from, you know, the Stop and Shop area down to St. Teresa's Church. So for the council and going forward, it would just be nice to make sure we're thinking about sidewalk planning, accessibility, walkability in town. The.
Were you, were you looking for any kind of answer from that?
No.
Just making a mention, okay, please, go ahead.
Flagging that. Down to the pool, for Tashawal Pool upgrades and renovations, how long will that fix last? So I know it's a pool liner, and we did that to the other pool in town last year or the year prior. How long is a new liner anticipated to last us for?
This is Dimitri Paris, Superintendent of Parks and Rec. Generally, a pool liner has a lifespan between 15 and 20 years. The existing liner that's in Tashawal right now is actually crossing into its 21st year. So it's certainly a proven technology in preserving, especially an exterior pool. The additional work that the, the Tashawal facility is going to be needing is really ADA compliance, safety measures for the mechanical system, relocation for the lifeguard, so they have a better perspective on the pool from being stuck in the corner where they are right now. So since we had to do so much repair work to the building itself, and a lot of the failing plumbing under the deck, it only made sense to incorporate a reconfiguration of the building. So what we see there in year one is just some of the preliminary work to lay out the building design, and then in next year's budget, we'll be coming back to be completing the project.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So this is long overdue, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Maybe so, maybe so, all right.
And just as a point, a further point of clarification, that we did approve some, the design in the previous, and, but there was additional costs that needed to be added for design in this bonding as well. Is that correct, and do I understand that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gaudiano, you have more?
I just have one more, I promise. I appreciate everybody taking the time. I think this one's for Mr. Estrada. Down in Snowplows and Sanders, right, the age-old question of how many snowplows we have. I see that, you know, we've got 25 working plows, we only have one spare. In a perfect world, how many would we have? You know, or in your past positions, how many extra plows, you know, do we really need?
Well, since that narrative had, was provided, that one has reached end of life. So to put it bluntly, we're in, we're pretty thin right now.
We're in critical time.
We're in critical period. Last week, we lost one of the, of the active 24 trucks, and it was down for a couple of days for major repair. It came back online by the weekend, thanks to the incredible work of our fleet maintenance department. So we currently have no, no, no spares. The Mason bodies, which are, which are about one-third the capacity of our plow trucks, stand in for a root when one of our trucks goes down now. And when we were struggling through 10 to 15 inches of snow, we, we begin to really put serious, severe strain on those trucks. So it would be a matter of time before we have to start replacing those trucks if we use those on a continuing basis. So it is of a critical nature at this point to, to replace, continue at least that one replacement per year, because we do have several trucks that are beyond that 20-year lifespan at this point. The two that passed, passed away this year were from the late 1980s. So they, they had served the town very well, really benefiting from the TLC that the fleet mechanics have provided to keep them on the road safely.
Okay, terrific, thank you. I'm glad I asked, Ben.
I, I have a question. Through the chair?
Please, Ms. Rosasco-Schwarz.
For Mr. Estrada, so again, the, this snowplow replacement is long overdue. It's been, it's been a number of years since we've been talking about this. So I'm glad that we're finally starting to do the replacement program. The question I have is how long does it take for you to get a new truck up and running? And there's, there's no shot of this, I know it's for the bonding for the next year's capital plan, but is there any shot of getting this in place for the remainder of this season, since we've had such a heavy snowplow season?
No, and it's, and it's a great question. We, last year, if you remember, in the bonding package, we had one replacement plow in the Highway Division, and we had, we were replacing one truck in the Parks Department that we actually will pull over into roadway, into the Highway Division when needed for a storm. Both of those trucks were ordered after the full approvals were in place, and we anticipate those to come in, we were hoping sometime in March, or they could be April. COVID has affected delivery times, but in average, delivery for a vehicle of this magnitude is probably eight to 10 months, on average. It could go a bit longer than that. So ordering something, if we, even if we had an emergency appropriation right now, we would, it would be probably almost impossible to bring something in in time for the season.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. In fact, I, I know that Ms. Rosasco-Schwarz remembers that we've, we put, we have put this off several times in the past, and, and I'm very glad, like you are, that we're going to be addressing this. Any other questions in the, for this resolution?
Yeah, through the chair.
Please, Mr. Miller.
This one's for, first one is for Mr. Paris. Abraham Nichols Barn, that is in Nichols, a historic building that we're looking to, up, looking to get back into shape. Is that, that, that's what that one is?
Yes, we used to use that barn, if you're familiar with it, for decades. It's just a raw storage facility for Parks and Rec equipment and supplies. We started to move things out into the Bill's property facility early last year when we discovered that the rear of the existing Woods Barn was actually collapsing in on itself. So we had to take, take some strong measures to stabilize that structure. It's a 150-year-plus-old facility, and well worth keeping. We'd like to see it put into shape so that we can actually use it for programming space, and of course, to keep the historic nature of, of that facility intact.
That was going to be my question, won't be used for storage in the future, the anticipation.
No, it's definitely, you know, the, the biggest deficit that, that we feel in Parks and Rec is, is a lack of accessible programming space. We're often very dependent upon a Board of Ed, and we just don't have a lot of structures, actually, we have very few. It's a, in total, it's a, it approaches a 3,000-square-foot facility. So it would allow for a lot of cross-utilization that we are, again, unable to, to currently easily program once completed and made weather tight and ADA compliant.
Thank you. And the other question I had was for Ms. Bakalar. The Dogwood Pond funding request, we currently have a, a state, an application out for a state grant on that, correct?
Yes.
Do we have anything else out for state grants? Do we, anything else on here qualify that we might be able to hit?
I'd have to look, you know, we're always looking for various grants to support the projects on the list. I think that most of the projects, we've either already secured funding to go toward a portion of them, or we're seeking funding and we push, push things off another year. So I don't think there's anything on this request that we have pending grants for, but we're always looking, you know, I, if you have a specific thing in mind, it's hard for me to say, there's so many things here.
We're, no, that was, that was more of a general question there, because we haven't heard on Dogwood yet, have we?
I just filed the grant on, on, excuse me, February 12th, so I'm thinking we will probably hear within the next two months. By April.
Thank you.
Sure.
And through the chair, Ashley Gaudiano. Ms. Bakalar, I had the same note. I just had it for Cat's Pond, wondering whether there was any environmental grant funding there, since that impacts the Paquannic.
So I think it was, was it Mary that somebody sent me a list of, I can't remember how I got a list of people.
It may have been Mary.
It could have been Mary or somebody. I don't know, I get so many things, but, and I forwarded it to Bill and Tatiana and George and folks to look at several of those funding sources to see if some of it might relate to the dredging.
Right.
George and I have had a few meetings with MetroCog to look at, we were looking to see if Brownfield's money could help us in that area, but it doesn't qualify exactly for that kind of funding. We did have a meeting to discuss that. So we'd have to look more into Cat's Pond to see, you know, what exactly are we trying to accomplish there? And what funding could work, you know? I don't know the situation, like if there are invasive species there, I don't know that. So, you know, oftentimes, we have to, we have to sort of identify the components of any major project and then figure out how to fund from there. So right now, I don't have any active grants for Cat's Pond.
That's fine, that's fine.
It's on our radar screen because it's sort of a, it's a second, we're working on the Veterans and First Responder Center, so sort of on a parallel track, we're having discussions about Cat's Pond. That's how the Brownfield's thing came up.
Okay, perfect.
Like Mary did, if anybody sees, I mean, I have a pretty constant look at things, both federal and state, but if you see something, you know, Bill, Mauer, and I are, and George are always discussing grants.
Okay, wonderful.
I was wondering, a preservation grant, by any chance, for the, for the barn?
Where, where's the barn, Mary? I'm sorry.
For the historic, sorry, the Abraham Nichols Barn?
Just as a reminder, just, let's try to.
Oh, sorry, Mary Isaac.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I'm just wondering if there might be a preservation grant for, for that, since it is, you know, is historic.
It's very possible. I'd have to know the scope of what's trying to be accomplished there to see if it qualifies. Is that something Dimitri works on? Is that the barn you talked to me about, Dimitri, one time?
Yes.
Okay. We could, we could look at it, but the, the problem is, some of these grants, like, we just, we just filed a 319 grant, which is through EPA, and the DEUP handles those funds for Long Hill Green to finish the patio, like, the, the stormwater management pavers. So I filed that January 14th. I called the state just to follow up to see when they're going to make a decision. They told me August. So it's like very, you have to plan these things very, very far ahead, and you don't know if the money's going to come or not. So if a project's more urgent, then, you know, sometimes it's very difficult to line the funding up in, in enough time. But if it's something like a barn restoration that we could keep on the radar screen, you know, we certainly will. Part of the challenge is, we've been doing so much extra grant work with COVID and everything, that it's really hard to do the proactive stuff. I'm just being candid, I'm the only person doing it, you know? So Bill and Tatiana, and we work as a team if it's something with them, and they'll help me on the technical side. But the research side and that, you know, it's, right now, it's sort of top priority projects that I'm doing the most time looking for money for. So we're just getting ready to put, Bill and I and Ty and Bond just got ready, just finishing up the Spring Hill Road, asked for lots of that application, you know? So those are like big projects that are in the wings, but, you know, please talk to me, you know? The more I understand what people are looking for and think is. what people are looking for and think is fundable, you know, the better chances it is that we're going to get funded, I mean. I, I, I'm sorry, I don't, you know, it's hard to keep track of every project, it really is.
And was the Cat's Pond, Ms. Bacalar, was that one of the ones that was identified in the natural resources inventory? I know that the Dogwood Pond was mentioned in that.
It, it's most certainly on there, but I'm not sure what aspect of Cat's Pond we're going to, you know, what, what we want to tackle. So we want to do a dredging project, so what happens first, you know, is it, is it? So depending on what we're looking to do, if we're really going to be looking to take on a major dredging project there, does it make sense? You know, those are the kinds of things that, you know, you don't want to pursue one thing only to have it, you know, undone or, you know, by something else. So maybe Bill can speak to Cat's Pond a little bit more and what the needs are there. I, aside from dredging, I don't know what the needs are.
In this year, in this year's ask, we were asking for money for the preliminary investigation and testing so that we can determine what needs to be done to Cat's Pond. I mean, that's the first step.
Yeah. So that would inform, that's why I don't, because if, if we don't have that intel, it's really hard to pursue grants. We have to know exactly what we're looking to do. So thankfully, we have Mary Ellen LeMay on our Conservation Commission, and she's fantastic, and she knew about, her and George Estrada knew about the Dogwood Lake Project. I'm sort of your tech, your person that just writes everything up, puts everything together. They give me, you know, they, I, I only, I know more about invasive species than I've ever wanted to know, let me just tell you. But it's like, I, that kind of intel has to be done, and then they raise, looking for money for this. Because if I don't know exactly, like Bill's saying, what we have to do to Cat's Pond, I don't know where to look and what makes sense. So it's important to fund what Bill's asking for, is I guess what I'm saying in the end, because that'll inform the ability for us to know if we can get some alternative revenue to support it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, George Estrada?
Please.
Just to add, that, that pond, Cat's Pond is, is multifaceted because it's not only the site of a development for the first responder facility, but that pond itself is part of the catchment area for the storm's water management system in that entire area there. So is it, this first step of doing the investigative part, as Rena said, knowing exactly what we, what we have in there, what we're going to need to address, do we or do we not have environmental issues that we would want to pursue grant funding or other sources? It's, this first step is identifying what will we do in the future. And, and depending on the outcome of that investigation, we will create a, we'll develop a plan for moving forward. But it is a water, water quality project. It is a storm water management project, and also some safety issues there with some of the other areas around the pond.
Great, thank you very much, which I think is why Ms. Gaudiano was wondering if there might be ecological funding available for that, yeah. So I'm sure you guys will continue to stay on it. Ms. Bacalar, you've been, I think I speak for everyone here when we all appreciate all the work you've done to continue to find funding for some of the projects that are important to our community. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you so much, and I can't, I have to say, people like Bill Mauer and George, we work as a team, and it's been great working with them too. And Dimitri, we're always working together on these projects. So we have a great team, and please reach out to me if you have any other specific projects you want me to keep on the radar screen.
Thank you very much. So I, I do have one question, I think it's for Mr. Paris. It's similar to the question about the pool liners, but it was specific to the pickleball and tennis courts at Unity specifically. I know that this will, this kind of project will, will make, one of our colleagues on the town council, I think it was Mr. Lemoine, that was talking about the pickleball at the Unity, so it'll probably make him happy to, to get that repaired. So my question would be, how long do those repairs typically last? And when was the last time that we did anything with the tennis courts and pickleball over at the Unity?
So pickleball came long after the last major repairs we did to our tennis courts, which are also approaching about twenty years. What we did at that point was we, we put a composite cover over the existing courts, which were decades old and in pretty rough shape at that point, and the intent was to buy it his time. And we, we bought twenty years. At this point now, everything is sort of crumbling underneath the liner or the composite cover, and all they need to go. So the direction we would like to go in is the same direction that we, we approached at the, at the high school. When the tennis court renovations took place over there, we opted for what's called post-tension concrete. So they're essentially a tension monolithic slab, it could, it could exist almost anywhere, and it's not really affected any longer by its surroundings or what subsurface or otherwise, it's its own entity. They have lifespans of well over twenty years. They're, they're essentially built to a highway standard, like it's a highway bridge. So we're, we're looking at well over twenty years, once we start moving into post-tension concrete.
Thank you, great, thanks. Since I live very near there, I'll look forward to playing on those courts. Any other questions or discussion about anything here in this resolution?
Evan, it's Tony, I've got one more question for Maria.
Please, Tony.
Hey Maria. Do you think down the road, seven million dollars for the property that hasn't been bonded yet will affect our bonding for town projects in the upcoming years?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Let's see. It's kind of like, the, the property is, was a large amount, and it hasn't been bonded yet. It's a short-term loan, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
And we're going to bond it down the road. So say you bond it in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, and then we have X amount expiring that year. Usually, we, we spend what we expire, right? That's what we usually do, correct?
Yeah, we try to do that.
Try to do that, right.
Just keep in mind that the seven million goes over twenty years.
No, no, I know that. But you still have to, don't you bond the whole amount at once?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So say you go to bond that whole amount, and then you have another, you know, similar like this year, another twelve. That means that one year, you'd have nineteen. Is, have we ever, have we, in the, I know you've been doing this for a long time. Have we ever had that? I don't remember having that situation since I've been here doing this stuff, but I'm sure it's happened in the past.
Yeah, I think a couple of times, we bonded approximately eighteen million, sixteen to eighteen million. But normally, we try to bond up to twelve million a year.
Right. I know there's exterminating circumstances, but I just wanted to ask, that's all. Thanks, Maria.
Exterminating.
So I think I saw Ms. Isaac, did you have a?
Yeah, sorry, um, yeah, Mary Isaac, just one question, and it may just be because of the, the way that it's funded, but for the Green Mower, for the fifty, I'm sorry, I'm trying to see, fifty-eight, six-seventy-nine, I, it doesn't say how that's being funded, does that go through the, the enterprise fund itself? You know, I thought we have to bond, and it's not through enterprise. It's the last, the last item.
Yeah, I'm not, listen, Mr. Miller, I'm not sure that's actually on this funding request, is it? The Greens Mower, Natasha Knowles?
No, they, they took it off the, they took it off the bonding project, they decided to delay and wait. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The mower that, that we have here is Parks, is for the Parks Department, it doesn't, it's not.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the one golf, that it's, it shows that it was approved, okay.
Yeah, that's, the, the golf one is not a part of this bonding request. Any other discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none. Is there any objection to passing this resolution by unanimous consent?
No.
Hearing, hearing none, this, thank you, Ms. Rosasco Schwartz, this resolution is passed by unanimous consent. That concludes the business of this committee for this evening. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
移到
Thank you, seconded? By Ms. Gaudiano, I think? Okay, great, great, thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.